Welcome to all of you and good morning Wichita. We'll call the meeting to order and with us today is Reverend Ben Staley of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will ask to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and we invite you to join us for both.
Let's pray together. Oh Lord, we're thankful for the coming of fall, a new season. We have discovered that you are the one who is able to make all things new as you watch over our city, make this to be a new season for us all. A new season of kindness and compassion for one another, a new season for our families and be with our children and teachers and administrators and guide them in this new school year. May this be a new season of comfort and hope for those in our community who are not well, who may be homeless or poor, guide workers and leaders who are dealing with a strike today. Make new our commitment to justice for all, no matter their race or gender, and help our city leaders to have wisdom and moral courage to be able to lead our community with values that are in keeping with your will for our city and everyone in it. And especially lead us in this session today. Help us, Lord, that by your grace, we will have a new attitude of thankfulness, peace with one another, and hope through Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Staley. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 24th, 2024.
Are there any changes or corrections? I see none. I move to approve the minutes for the September 24th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and proclamations. Today for proclamations, we have the Building and Managers Association Day, Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week, and Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
May I please ask the individuals with the Building BOMA Day to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Building Owners and Managers Association, also known as BOMA, of Wichita, Kansas, has been a cornerstone of the city's commercial real estate industry for forty-one years. BOMA has demonstrated unwavering dedication to fostering professional development, promoting advocacy, and driving community engagement within the commercial real estate sector. Whereas BOMA's commitment to excellence has significantly contributed to the growth and prosperity of Wichita's environment, enhancing the quality of life for residents and businesses alike. BOMA's commitment to sustainability and innovation has led to the implementation of environmentally responsible practices and cutting-edge technologies, enhancing Wichita's reputation as a forward-thinking and environmentally conscious city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2024, as BOMA Day in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of the Building Owners and Managers Association to Wichita's success."
Thank you all for joining us today for this significant occasion as we celebrate BOMA Wichita Proclamation Day. This proclamation is more than just a recognition of our organization. It's a celebration of the work we do together to strengthen the commercial real estate industry in Wichita. For years, BOMA Wichita has been committed to advancing the interests of property owners, managers, and professionals in the built environment. We are not only advocates for the industry, but also a community of leaders who are dedicated to fostering growth, sustainability, and innovation within our city. Today's proclamation reinforces our role as a vital part of Wichita's economic development and underscores our dedication to the long-term success of the city's commercial real estate landscape. This is a moment to reflect on how we, as BOMA members, contribute to the fabric of the community, ensuring that the spaces we manage and maintain serve as pillars of progress for businesses, residents, and visitors alike. I want to thank Mayor Lily Wu and the City Council for this honor and for acknowledging the important role of BOMA Wichita, the important role BOMA Wichita plays in shaping the future of our city. This recognition encourages us to continue our mission with even more passion and commitment. Let's take this moment to celebrate what we've accomplished together and look forward to the exciting opportunities ahead. Thank you for all being here today and thank you for your continued support of BOMA Wichita.
May I please ask the Junior League of Wichita to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Junior League of Wichita was established in 1925 and is an organization of women committed to advancing women's opportunities for leadership and meaningful community impact through volunteer action, collaboration, and training. Whereas Junior League of Wichita has been the driving force behind investments, initiatives, and institutions that make Cedric County a healthier, more vibrant community, including the Pride of the Plains exhibit at the Cedric County Zoo, revitalization of Heritage Square Park, establishment of the Baby Mobile Outreach Program with the Wichita Children's Home, and partnering in the expansion of the Child Advocacy Center. Whereas Junior League of Wichita is hosting the 19th Annual Holiday Galleria to raise funds to fulfill their current initiative of empowering women to be safe, smart, and successful by offering assistance connecting women with lifesaving resources, financial literacy education, providing scholarships to advanced learning, professional development opportunities, and mentorship. Whereas Junior League of Wichita's core values of diversity, collaboration, community investment, leadership, respect, and service enable all women in Cedric County to serve as catalysts for lasting change within their community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim October 3rd to 6th, 2024, as Junior League of Wichita Appreciation Week in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to express their appreciation by supporting Junior League of Wichita by attending the 2024 Holiday Galleria held at Century 2 Expo Hall."
Thank you Mayor Wu and Council. It is our pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Junior League of Wichita. Since Junior League of Wichita's inception in 1925, thousands of women have served the greater Wichita area as volunteers. These women represent all walks of life with common goals of serving the community and developing their potential as women. Our current mission, voted on by members in April 2022, will focus on how we can support women in every walk of life. The scope of this focus area will allow Junior League of Wichita to support a variety of initiatives that empower women to be safe, smart, and successful. Holiday Galleria, A Day of Shopping, A Year of Giving, is Junior League of Wichita's annual upscale shopping event featuring one hundred and twenty regional and national merchants. The 19th Annual Holiday Galleria is scheduled for this weekend, October 3rd through 6th, 2024, at Century 2 Expo Hall. The objective of Holiday Galleria is to raise funds to fulfill Junior League of Wichita's goal of building a better community. We would like to thank our sponsors, both past and present, who helped us raise net proceeds of more than one point nine million dollars in our first eighteen years. Junior League of Wichita is an organization of women committed to promoting volunteerism, developing the potential of women, and improving communities that effective, or improving communities through effective communication and trained leadership and our volunteers. Thank you again for your consideration and support of our mission and your time here this morning.
May I please invite the Wichita Cedric County Community Response Team to come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an important opportunity for citizens to learn about domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who are providing advocacy efforts, services, and assistance to domestic violence survivors and victims. Whereas the Cedric County Wichita Coordinated Community Response Team are committed to taking a firm position against domestic violence and will remain focused on ensuring that victims are safe in their homes and abusers are held accountable for their crimes. Whereas domestic violence and sexual assault result in victimization of adults, children, and families throughout the world. Whereas more than six thousand cases of domestic violence are reported each year in Wichita and the criminal justice system dedicates tremendous resources to arrest and prosecute perpetrators. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to promote healthy, nonviolent relationships for all."
Thank you Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the Wichita Cedric County Coordinated Community Response Team, we accept this with so much gratitude. We have had a significant increase in domestic violence cases in the City of Wichita for the last five years. In the last year, we had over seventy-eight hundred cases in the City of Wichita alone. That is more than twenty-one cases per day reported to law enforcement. We have a great team of community leaders, advocates, medical professionals, law enforcement, and prosecutors dedicated to reducing the number of domestic violence cases. We will continue to provide care and critical services to survivors of domestic violence. We need to work towards building a culture where domestic violence is not going to be tolerated. Our community members should feel safe and respected and live free from abuse. Thank you.
Can we please invite our speaker for today?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Pete Nahara and I'm the president and CEO of Your United Way of the Plains. And I wanted to thank you for giving me just a few minutes to address the council on behalf of the citizens we support here in Wichita. For a hundred and two years, the United Way of the Plains has been a force for good in this community. Founded in nineteen twenty-two by the local business community, it was created as a way for the community to pool all of its resources into one organization so that it could make a positive social impact in the areas our community needed the most. Today, we still have challenges in strengthening our community, just like we did a hundred years ago. They may be different, but they are just as difficult to solve today as they were in nineteen twenty-two. In community health, our state was once ranked number eight in the country, but now it is ranked twenty-ninth due to higher cost and limited access. In education, over seventy percent of our third graders may not yet be reading at proficient levels to ensure graduating high school in the future. In financial stability, we have data that shows us that forty percent of our working families are living paycheck to paycheck. And when basic costs like rent and childcare are rising much faster than inflation, it's making it tougher for everybody. And in basic needs, we continue to address the affordable housing crisis so that every neighbor can have a stable roof over their head and food on the table. But I'm optimistic that we can and that we are doing better over a century later. We have been working very hard with businesses and all of you and local government to tackle these complex social challenges so that we can foster a community where everyone can thrive. For example, in health, we now have a strong partnership with Delta Dental where we're able to provide care for the uninsured. In education, we now have an army of volunteers who mentor over three hundred children in third grade for thirty minutes a week so that they are on grade level when they enter fourth grade. In financial stability, together, we created a coalition, the first of its kind in the state of Kansas, to provide second chance banking for the unbanked and the underbanked so that thousands of families now can use secure banking systems and not use predatory lending practices that take thirty percent of their paycheck. And in basic needs, we have partnered with the city and the county to form and lead the Coalition to End Homelessness, something that each of you are actively involved with and we appreciate your support. By partnering with the city, we are also able to now provide free rides for veterans to use public transportation, to use the world-class VA Medical Center right here so they can get the healthcare they need. And last year alone, together, we helped sixty thousand rides between vets and the VA so they can get the healthcare they need. And finally, we operate the 211 Call Center, the social service hotline that handles issues that 911 is not prepared for. These are calls to help people prevent homelessness, for calls to help people find food to feed their family, for calls for people to help keep the heat on when winter approaches. And so... Today, we serve over eight hundred thousand people in a ten-county service region around Wichita. We are the largest charity in south-central Kansas and we take pride in being the backbone of a charitable ecosystem called to provide a strong social safety net to help those with a hand in their time of need. Over the past five years, the United Way has mobilized resources to serve our community and help others over two point five million times. It's by harnessing the collective power of many that we are able to help so many, especially two years ago during the Andover tornado, something we're still helping the citizens recover from today. Or to help twelve thousand kids now learn to read before they enter kindergarten so that they're not in crisis by third grade. Or how we help six thousand families get their tax return back free every year. Not to mention the ninety-one other causes we support and programs we fund last year alone to help harness the caring power of this community. Because of this economy of scale, we have become an exceptional steward of the donor dollar, converting every donated dollar into two dollars and thirty-seven cents of impact in our community, proving that when we all join the movement to help others, we are a powerful force for good. So, in closing, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council members all here for choosing to run for office. I know it's something difficult, but it's a noble calling that you have chosen to represent our community in an act of selflessness and public service. I also want to thank our city manager, Bob Layton, and the three thousand people that have chosen a career of public service to work for the people of Wichita as a member of the city government to fight for something larger than themselves in advancing the common good in our community. And on behalf of the eight hundred thousand people that I represent here at the United Way, I want to thank everybody here for what they do on their own time to donate their time and their talent and their treasure to invest in the work that we are doing at their United Way of the Plains. I mean, look, any United Way is only as strong as the community that supports it. So I'm very grateful for everyone here for your leadership, for your personal example, and for your support of the work we do to help our neighbors and lift this community that we call home right here in Wichita, because together, we are a force for good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pete, for giving us the opportunity to learn more about the United Way of the Plains. And we appreciate having these presentations that will be forthcoming. Next week, we will have Wichita Public Schools come forward and give a presentation as well. So thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Celeste Rosette, Eightieth Liberation Anniversary of Orleans, France.
Bonjour. I am Celeste Rosette, a Wichita native and currently reside at Twenty-First and Ridge. This is a heartfelt thank you to Mayor Wu and you all, city council members, for allowing four delegates from the Wichita area sister cities to represent the City of Wichita for the Eightieth Liberation Anniversary in Orleans, France. Myself, Kelly Harper, Kay Miller, Lisa Burns represented you all. Because you could not travel, we understand that, and we paid our own travel expenses in case taxpayers are wondering. We, um, I want to say that this was just truly an emotional journey. My father, Vince Bogart, was an Army Air Corps bomber and fighter pilot in World War II, and he visited Orleans as Wichita mayor in nineteen sixty-four. So this was a particularly special journey for me, attending sixty years later. So again, merci. The exuberance for Wichitaans in Orleans is actually unparalleled. We rode in a World War II Jeep along a two-mile parade route with joyous crowds yelling "Bonjour" and "Wichita." Orleans folks were waving US flags from the sidewalk and even up on the balconies on the third-floor stories of buildings. The military vehicles in the parade were actually from World War II, and it included tanks and armored vehicles. General Patton's granddaughter, I got to meet her, Helen Patton, she laid flowers on the memorial for Allied soldiers in the town square and then again at the Memorial Plaza. There were US Army servicemen and women from Stuttgart, Germany, as well as US military brass from Kansas City. The memorial ceremony was solemn and respectful. The Star Spangled Banner was performed by the France Military Band on every occasion we were there. Every ten years, Orleans celebrates this liberation with the highest regard for the state of Kansas. Why? Because on August 16th, nineteen forty-four, Orleans was liberated from Nazi occupation by the Kansas Regiment of the One Thirty-seventh Infantry of the Thirty-Fifth Army Division. Since that day, that very day in nineteen forty-four, goodwill visits between the two cities have continued. President Eisenhower, another Kansas native, made this sister-city relationship formal as a way to promote international friendship and goodwill. In nineteen seventy, Orleans gave Wichita a hand-carved stone statue of Joan of Arc. Wichita in turn gave Orleans a miniature train for carrying children around their community park. In nineteen ninety, Wichita gave a replica of Black Bear Bozin's Keeper of the Plains, which I saw. Wichita shipped its stone Joan of Arc figure to Rome where it was copied and cast in bronze. The bronze is one of only two reproductions of a sculpture completed in eighteen thirty-six that is currently located in marble in the Palace of Versailles. One of only two, and I saw our sister bronze statue in Orleans this year. This bronze is displayed outside the former public library at two-two-three South Main, and two Wichita nonprofits care for the flowerbeds surrounding the statue, Save Century Two and Wichita Area Sister Cities. Please catch the beauty of the mums and lavender that are now in full bloom around the statue. Here in Wichita, the Eightieth Liberation Anniversary was celebrated with a posting of colors and presentation in Cedric County Historic Museum. This included a reading of historical eyewitness accounts from the Army servicemen present in nineteen forty-four during the liberation of Orleans, and several of you honored our program by attending. Thank you Mayor Wu for speaking at the anniversary of... Thank you, Mayor Wu, for speaking at the anniversary event, and to those of you who were present, and I think it was Ho Heisel and Ballard, and if I forgot anybody, sorry, but thank you for coming because it's so important that we here in Wichita also celebrate what our veterans and servicemen did in World War II. So thank you for gracing our presentation. There is so much more I could say about this celebration, but let me end by asking for each of us to do our part to remember the sacrifice eighty years ago in a land across the ocean for a country whose language we did not speak. Thank you for representing our relationship and supporting us, and next year in April, nine Orleans citizens will be coming here for a week stay. Please help us reciprocate their hospitality and to remember to brush up on your fridge.
Thank you, Celeste. And now we will open it up for individuals who would like to speak during public...
Mayor, we have one more on the agenda. Andrew Crane, access issue.
Good morning. This is Andrew Crane, Guiding Pause ICT, and I am here today on behalf of the Access Advisory Board and wanting to let you guys know that there was an article in the KSN on disability access for downtown Wichita, and the ranking that got, it is down to zero on access for the disabled community. Now, we, I, the Disability Access Advisory Board has a question for city manager and Troy Anderson on that article, and also the city council, too. So, I, I, that, that's my question, and seeing if we can get a representative city manager to come to the Access Advisory Board, because a lot of dis- disabled people are not too happy that we are low on access in downtown Wichita and all over the place. Even today, when I was walking over here, I walked down Market to First Street, there was barricades up, and I had an issue of crossing the street, and I had to cross in the middle of the street, and not very safe. And, and that, and there was also glass on the sidewalk, too, and, and that. So, that's, that's one of the things that you guys need to be working on, and to make this city more accessible to the blind and low-vision community here in Wichita. Any questions?
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's actually for Gary. Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Gary, I just wondered if you could address some of Mr. Crane's concerns, and I haven't had a chance to read the article yet, I just, we just got it in our email, but if you could address any of those concerns, that would be awesome.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Gary Johnson, Public Works and Utilities. So, we are aware of the article that Andrew mentions, haven't had a chance to really dig in. The next Access Advisory Board meeting is on October twenty-third. Staff will be there to help answer questions. One of our challenges right now is the reference story is very broad. There's not a lot of specifics in there, it's really kind of hard to tell, even though there's some criteria listed on how cities were ranked. It really, from what I've seen so far, it really doesn't dig into, it talks about a lot to do with development and companies within a city. Not exactly sure how that ties to accessibility, but we'll look into it more. We work closely with the Access Advisory Board and others. We've got staff that's currently working with Federation for the Blind on some very specific accessibility, access, accessibility issues within the community, including with traffic signals, the specific area at First and Market that Andrew referenced is part of our downtown streets conversion. I happened to be sitting at that intersection yesterday, and I know that there still is accessibility around that area, but we will double-check that to make sure. Anyway, we're looking into this, certainly spend time with Andrew, as we often do, to discuss this further, but right now, I think it's been hard for us to pull out much of detail-wise, we'll have to look into this a little bit more.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho Heisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andrew, for bringing this to our attention. I'm going through the study right now. I would ask, do you have a link to where it, to Gary's point, it might be a little more in-depth? I've clicked on this, and I'm kind of gazing through some of the metrics here, but it doesn't have, like Gary said, kind of a more thorough response. So do you know if there, there is one, or is that something I need to look up on my own time?
Probably look up on your, your own time, and, and that, because when, when the Access Advisory Board got that, we, we saw that, we were, we were like, what in the heck? You know, you know, the city of Wichita should be ranked very, very, very high on accessibility. And I know back in the day, two thousand seventeen, we, we actually filed with the city, and, and that, and we actually took over one of the buses. If you, if you guys look back, back when, that, that did get filed, and I think Mr. Tom Page and a few others on the Access Advisory Board filed against the city, because the city hasn't done anything. And that, it, it's time, it's twenty-twenty-four, folks. It's time to change a couple of things.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I really do. I'm just wondering, like, what can we gain from this study, or what can we glean from it? The points that they make are an issue with our public transit system, and then wheelchair accessibility, especially with grocery stores. Those are some of the, two of the three things that they're pointing out here, so I just want to make sure that we dig into it and really understand the other areas that we're falling behind as well, and make sure we address those. So are there any other studies, too, that you could send us or make us aware of that's done around Wichita and accessibility?
I, I can, I can, I can definitely, definitely do that for you, Ho Heisel.
All right, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andrew. We will now open it up for individuals in the community who would like to speak.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Twila Purity, I live in District One, and I'm coming back again to talk about parking. Even just today, I think I mentioned it last time when we spoke about parking, trying to come to City Hall, they were still letting people in, the parking system letting people in, folks were circling, no parking places, city vehicles were seen, and there were six spots protected by cones, and I've seen that, and there was one spot with a city vehicle still in it, I say city, it looked like a truck, I think it had a city decal, and a cone. So folks are protecting their spaces with cones, and we're just unable to find places to park. A couple times I've been here and I've seen, I, I don't know if you have motorcycle parking, but motorcycles taking up independent car spaces, and so motorcycle parking might help with that. But the other thing, so, I'm not opposed at all to the new parking system that is being explored by the city. I'm just, my comments are really to encourage thoughtful and thorough consideration on how these are going to impact those with fewer resources. So a couple things, I was visiting my sister, and we were in Cape May, New Jersey, and there were signs for parking, we're going to park in that cool shopping area, and they were all in English, so right there could be a problem for some folks. I learned yesterday that with some of these Google Translate, you can take a picture of something and it'll translate for you. Now, I don't know if that requires internet, but if so, and you can only use your phones on Wi-Fi, then you wouldn't be able to use that service perhaps out in the community. But we paid for two hours, and then we left early, and then, so someone else could come in, and if you do a meter, I leave early, and then somebody can use my money and use that time. But under this system, and I don't know how you plan to use it here, but you would potentially be getting paid double or triple, perhaps, you know, for the same space, and I don't know that that's your intent. And then, we were in Philadelphia, whoops, we were in Philadelphia, and there was a, a radio program, and they were talking about a new lot in downtown Philadelphia that converted from coin parking to this automated system, I wish I knew what it's called, but anyway. There was a man, and he was clearly caught off guard, he didn't have a way to pay, but he was always had his coins, so he could pay. And one of the other things that I thought I'd mention, under their new system, and I don't know if it works with the system anticipated here, but you can't back into parking spaces. And Wichitaans love to back into parking spaces, and I know that, because I pay attention, because I'm jealous. I cannot back up my pickup, I just can't do it. So anyway, Wichitaans love backing up, and that might be an impact. But the impact really is on the poor, and I don't know, I mean, I have a bank account, I have a credit card, but not everybody does, and if you haven't, if you don't have this book, highly, highly recommend it, there's amazing statistics in here, but one of them, so if you have to have a bank account, according to the FDIC, and this was in twenty-nineteen, let's see, in, one in nineteen US households had no bank account in twenty-nineteen. Black and Hispanic families were nearly five times more likely to lack a bank account. And then when it comes to credit, you know, if you want to put it on a credit card, but as troublesome as bad credit is, having no credit score at all, which is the case for twenty-six million adults in the United States, another nineteen million possess a credit history, too thin or outdated to be scored. So consider that. And then enforcement is really kind of one of my concerns. Who's going to set the amount of fees? What fines and fees and surcharges will be added? What would be the consequences if their fines are unpaid? Are you going to tow? Will there be more fines? Are you going to suspend licenses? What will be the scope of the work of those enforcing parking? Is it going to go beyond this? Will they be able to fine folks if their tag is expired? Are they going to be able to go into neighborhoods and look for illegal parking? And then I just want to encourage that you get really granular data so that you can use it for decision-making. And if this is going to be ran by and profited by Car Park, you know, as an executive, my job is maximize shareholder wealth, and that's going to be, if it's a for-profit company, that's what they're going to be looking for. So just please be thoughtful and thorough in all aspects, so it doesn't negatively impact our marginalized folks here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Twila, thank you so much for bringing up some of those topics. I believe myself and the majority of the council, if not all, is very sensitive to some of the things that you brought up, and in some of the conversations that we've been having are having the first hour or two potentially free for anywhere that you're parking, and I think that could maybe help with the duplicate, you know, paying for the two hours and not utilizing the full two hours. So, I'm happy that we're looking or considering something like that for the reason that you suggested, and also knowing that, you know, maybe sometimes in the evening or on the weekends, it would potentially be free. So, I just appreciate you bringing those up, and I think most of us have said the entire time that some type of hybrid is going to be really important. I always joke around about my dad's always going to have coins in his pocket and maybe not want to put the app, so I think certainly during any time of transition, we would need to have the QR code, the app, and a place to feed the meter, too. So appreciate all of your comments, and it sounds like we're on the right track for some of the concerns.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would just add to that, we're finalizing a meeting for October twenty-eighth at the Advanced Learning Library to go over some more specifics about the parking plan, so once that gets all done, I'll let you know about that, too.
Thanks, Twila. Would anyone else from the audience like to speak?
Good morning. I'm Kelly Harper, twelve forty North Tallyrand, here in Wichita. Mayor Wu, City Council, I am here to, as a sister-city member, and also past president, and a very longtime member of our sister-city relationships, five decades, in fact. I was in the very first ambassadorial group to Orleans, five decades, over five decades now. So I have a very deep relationship with these people. With this, the reason for my presence here at the podium is not to tell you just about who I am and why I have this interest, but I have a gift from the city of Orleans, from Mayor Gruar, the mayor of Orleans, to, for me to present to you, Lily Wu, on behalf of the city. We had an absolutely incredible time for the eightieth anniversary of liberation, and I want to make sure that that really sinks in. Eighty years, I'm repeating, eighty years. I certainly was not living eighty years ago, and my father did not speak of the war and his participation at Normandy, but I can tell you that there are still people alive in the city of Orleans that remember those Kansas men marching into their war-torn city, and specifically are grateful to those Wichita men that pushed the Nazis all the way out to the marginal line. With that, became this deep appreciation for the people, and not only those soldiers, but the Wichitaans that then began to provide box after box after, and shipment after shipment of things to help the people of Orleans live in those war-torn years. This book that Mayor Gruar is sending, actually, it's a beautiful, beautiful book, and the very front cover, which I hope that will be displayed somewhere, is my favorite view of Orleans. I have lived in Orleans myself for two years, and during those two years, forty-seven years ago, people constantly were thanking me. I was eighteen when I first went, I was twenty when I went to live there for two years, and people were constantly thanking me for liberating them. And I thought, I'm just a young person, why do they keep thanking me? It was my father's war, but it was the American people they wanted to convey. And what we saw in Orleans last month for this eightieth anniversary, the throngs of people that came out to cheer the parade that went by, still saying, "Thank you, thank you," and pounding their hearts with gratitude. We are a very special sister-city to them, and while they have so many more sister-cities than we have here in Wichita, we will always be among their very top favored ones because of what our soldiers did. So this view, my favorite view, is a view of the cathedral from across the river. This cathedral has the story of Joan of Arc in all of the stained-glass windows, and her story of the Hundred Years' War. This is not the first war, World War I, World War II, we're not the first wars they experienced, but the Hundred Years' War and that, that, that fortitude of Joan of Arc that pushed through and liberated the city of Orleans, she is their patron saint. So this church right here is very representative of the city. I'm almost out of seconds, but I just want to say thank you for allowing us to go and represent the city of Wichita at the city's eightieth anniversary in Orleans. Mayor Wu, may I step forward?
Councilmember Ho Heisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for the presentations today and the descriptions of Orleans, it really sounds like a beautiful picturesque community, and I think we should all take some time every once in a while to... And I think we should all take some time every once in a while to pause and reflect on what older generations did, not only abroad but also here, to help protect and defend democracy and ensure our freedoms that we have nowadays. So I guess a special thank you to anybody still alive from World War II, any of the other wars as well. It's good to always just reflect, take time to reflect on this.
Thank you again, Kelly. Would any other individual like to speak? We have one more spot.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council. My name is Harlan Bascom. I live in District Three. I'm going to echo the, one of the previous speakers about the parking that is available here at City Hall. I spent twenty minutes trying to find a parking spot today. I wound up having to park somewhere else and walk to City Hall. There were twenty-seven city vehicles parked in the surface parking that should be for the public. We are not allowed to park in the parking garage, which there were eighty-plus spots open there, and we're not allowed to park in the vacant lot around some porter where there was more than enough parking to take care of the city vehicles. I've been complaining about this for six months now. This is the third time I've spoke, and I would appreciate the issue being resolved. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, aren't we reviewing this process?
Councilmember, yes, we are. And in fact, I visited with staff a few weeks ago about it and waiting to get back a report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you again, Harlan.
The number nine mentioned that city manager says we're working on what he said last time, nothing is still.
Can we have a deadline for that review process? By the first meeting in November, one month from now?
We'll report back.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please call the next item? Consent agenda items one through fourteen. Are there any items to be pulled?
I would like to pull item three A.
Member Hoheisel.
I'd like to pull item eight, please.
Three A and number eight. I'd like to pull item three B. So we have three A, three B, and eight. I motion to approve the consent agenda items without items three A, three B, and eight. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We'll begin with item three A chronologically.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I think yours is three B. Is that correct?
Three A.
Three A. So could we have Gary come forward to talk about three A?
I guess my concerns, Mayor, are we spent half a million dollars on the design of a six-hundred-thousand-dollar bridge, and we're spending two-hundred-thousand dollars on public art, six-hundred-thousand dollars. So, I mean, for the bridge and everything, but it seems like a lot of money we're spending other than construction.
Paul Gunsmen with Public Works and Utilities. To answer your question, Councilmember, we do the two-hundred-thousand dollars each year as we go through the capital improvement process, we do meet with the Design Council. They identify projects within the CIP for special consideration, and they assign an amount of art for those projects to those, they assign funding to those projects that are selected for special consideration. We take those recommendations from the Design Council and then we program those into the capital improvement program. The, you are correct, it is two-hundred-thousand dollars. That does include the contract with the artist as well as installation of the public art pieces. And the design, the six-hundred-thousand dollars I believe you are referencing is for the design of the bridge itself. We will come back at a future date for construction funding.
I will also ask about three B since you're already here, because it's the same question. I was going to pull three A as well.
Sure.
It was also in consideration to public art. Can you talk about the Red Bud Trail overpass? I believe it's three-hundred-thousand dollars in public art for that one?
Yes, again, we, that was another project they had selected. The Red Bud Trail is approximately three and a half miles. That is unimproved, so we will make improvements from Woodlawn to K-96, and three-hundred-thousand dollars was identified for the project. We did go out and hired a artist consultant for that work, or an artist, and we took that to Design Council, and they had identified the Rock Road Bridge as the location to concentrate the art funding for that project.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for that update. Paul, I just wanted to add a little bit more, if that's okay. Regarding the Red Bud Trail, this is a project that we have been working with the community for several years now. And we've met with community members, with key stakeholders around this project, and they have indicated that especially because of the placement of the bridge, that they want to make sure that it is something special and something that is aesthetically pleasing because so many people traverse Rock Road. We're doing the pedestrian bridge because of safety. We don't want people to walk, bike, stroller, you know, whatever, scooter, whatever it may be, across Rock Road for their safety purposes. And I don't consider this just to be public art. When we think of public art, we also often think of a statue or something, but I liken this more to East Kellogg where it's public design. It's something that's incorporated into the project and not just placed at the end. So just a final couple of thoughts. Not only is there funding in this, for this project in the CIP, which was approved by council, there's also been funding sought from additional sources such as WAMPO, and we also have potential public-private partnerships that we'll be seeking to make sure that this project comes to fruition. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll chime in on three A. When you look at that bridge, this has actually been an effort that started before I was on council regarding the Fifteenth Street Bridge. Looking at replacing that, there's been several community meetings, but one of the things that we wanted to make sure was special with that bridge was that it plugged into what we're seeing in revitalization of Mac Adams Park. Carl G. Brewer Center is going to be incredible when people see the artwork there, both the design of it and the artwork inside. And this bridge is happening at the same time. This bridge is going to be removed, the vehicular bridge and the pedestrian bridge being put back, and it adds to the overall beauty of the area artistically, functionally, and it will be a seamless thread of our art throughout the park there, make it pretty unique. So it may seem like a lot, but you know, the goal is to continue to make that a destination park, a destination place, and something that the community can be proud of. So, yep, two-hundred-thousand dollars is real money, but it's a permanent project that that bridge will last for several decades as well as the Brewer Center, and it's definitely worth the investment.
City Manager Layton.
Mayor, thank you. There has been a lot of discussion about the public art policy over the last several months, and I wonder if you would consider an October workshop item that would be a presentation to remind the council of what the current policy is, which is pretty comprehensive as it was last adopted by the council. And then maybe you have a representative or two from the Design Council to give you their thoughts about what their purpose is and what, why they make the recommendations that they do, because they do have control over some of the recommendations to you for public art and public design in projects in a capital improvement program.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you, Bob. I love that idea. I think it's really important for us all to understand, you know, it's not just public art. The word art, often we think of a painting that goes above a mantle, we think of, you know, sculptures, whatever it may be, but truly, this is public design. It's incorporated, and maybe it's the way that a sidewalk is built, or maybe it's, again, like I mentioned, East Kellogg. So I'm really trying to think about it being public design. When we talk about attracting and retaining talent, we want our, our community to be vibrant, we want it to be aesthetically pleasing, and I, I think that we're really forward-thinking by having public design part of our process and not an afterthought of trying to add art later. So I would really welcome that. My other comment is it might be a good opportunity too to invite the Arts Council. I'm a, I'm a proud member of the Arts Council Board, and they have a really great thoughts about this and this process. So that would be a recommendation that I would like to see. Thank you.
I will add one additional comment to the October workshop. I think that's a great idea. I would like to see how much money has been invested in public art, broken down by district, D-one, D-two, D-three, D-four, D-five, D-six, so that it shows the representation of where public art dollars are being spent and how much by each district. In addition, I would also like to know if in that workshop, or maybe in future, we can also, I really appreciate that Mac Adams Park is what Councilmember called a destination park and place, so we've made intentional investments into specific parks. I'd like to see how much of that intentional investment is actually made, so cumulative, so we can have a show of how much money is spent on each of these destination parks. And then agenda, consent agenda item number eight.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Penny Weiss, Wishel Transit.
Hey, Penny. Appreciate you coming up here. Appreciate all the work you've done in the couple of months you've been up here as head of our Transit Department, so thank you for that. Just a couple of quick questions. One, is this going to affect anybody's job?
No. The reason for this contract is we currently have a fifty percent vacancy in our mechanic group, and so this is just going to help us supplement the work that we can't do due to that vacancy rate.
Okay, so it's not about cost savings or anything? It's more convenience, making sure we can get to the vehicles in a timely manner?
Yeah, I, I would say more than convenience is a necessity because we have FTA guidelines to meet as far as the number of preventive maintenance activities we need to do each month, and because we're currently unable to meet that, we have to get outsourced assistance. My preference would be to not use outsourced labor, and we're also currently putting together recruitment plans so we can get those positions filled because that's what we would prefer to do.
Okay, so the other fifty percent, that is, that the employees are in their positions, they'll still be doing what they're normally doing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yep, just wanted to double check on that before we could pass it. All right, thank you.
Would you like to, motion to approve the three items together or separately?
Yes, ma'am. I'll go ahead and if there's no objection, I'll just group them all together. So I move that we approve item three A, three B, and eight of the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on your direction for staff to give some type of log for what public art is in each district about what you're looking for. I mean, I don't think that, I feel like District One is very different than District Two where we represent the core. I just am curious, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just curious what your goal is for kind of itemizing what public art is in each district.
Just want to see, I think public wants to know how much intentional investment we're making in each of the districts. I think it's a fair question to ask how much of an investment we're making in specific parks and specific public art. I would like a broken down for everything, but I'm being very specific to public art since that is going to be the workshop in October. Councilmember Johnson.
Second. And I think data-wise, and I don't know what the data's going to show in a report like that, but I think we also have to be mindful of each council member, and some of us have put more effort into certain parks. So if there looks like there is a discrepancy, it could be that, you know, District Three, Councilmember Hoheisel really wants to see Clap Park happen, there may be some investment there. Numbers might be a little different. So I think to go along with the data is also, was there efforts to make something happen in a specific district at a specific time? Pawnee Prairie Park got a million dollars. There was a council member who specifically wanted to do something there, so I, I think we can look at the data, but also look at was there something that a particular council member was trying to accomplish with fellow council members in a certain areas.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and, and if I missed this part, I'm sorry. Was there a timeframe given for how, how far back we're going to look for the investment in each district?
The mayor did not. We're going to try to keep it manageable either, you know, probably no farther back than ten years, but we'll, we'll do a five or ten-year period, whatever, you know, we can get together and it's reliable data.
Right, and, and that's my point for asking that question is exactly what Councilmember Johnson said. You know, like in District Two, you know, we, we did the Dog Park in Harrison, but we haven't had other new projects such as Clap. So I just am curious and concerned that the data, I'm, I'm not sure how it'll be used or with, again, you know, what, but it's not always just comparing apples to apples. There's a lot of oranges in there too. Thank you.
And we'll wind up probably showing multiple funding sources as well. For instance, you know, there's been a sizable investment in Stryker Shields, or Shields-Stryker complex, excuse me, but most of that is star bond funds.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six one. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councils, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, September thirtieth, for the following items. For purchasing, we have the six thousand eight hundred gross vehicle weight restriction two-wheel-drive police package SUV. We're rejecting all bids to look at a bid at a later date. Caustic Soda for Brent Tag Southwest Incorporated in the amount of an estimated annual usage of eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. We have the repairs and upgrades to the landfill wheel loader for Foley Industries Incorporated in the amount of fifty thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. We have the sewage treatment Vortex grit separator for West Tech Engineering Incorporated in the amount of fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. We have the VMware software maintenance and support renewal for Logicalis Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open public opportunities out on the street today. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, recommend your approval.
I motion to approve the board of bids. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning. Paul Gunsmen, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, I have new and revised petitions for your consideration this morning. Signatures on the petitions represent one hundred percent of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Bridger at Pawnee Edition located in District Four, project will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements required for new residential development. And revised petition, Meridian Fifty-three Second Edition located in District Six, on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, City Council approved sewer improvements required for a new commercial development. The developer has submitted revised petitions and revised budgets to reflect current market conditions. conditions. It is recommended that City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt a new and amending resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. I withstand for questions.
See no questions for staff? I motion to approve the petition for public improvements. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Resolution setting a public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the Center City South redevelopment district plan.
Good morning, Mayor, Member City Council, Mark Elder with Development Services. Today is just a request to set a public hearing that would be on November 5th for consideration of the requested action. Want to do a little bit of background just because we have some new members since we've had any TIF action. But tax increment financing is a very valuable redevelopment tool used for revitalization of designated areas. But what does it, it does protect the existing tax base, but only the portion of the new tax revenue is what we call the increment, is what's used to pay for eligible redevelopment costs, but it does not increase sales tax or property tax rates. This, we like to use it as one of the most basic models of how tax increment financing works, where you can see the orange there with the existing tax base. And then with a TIF, that incremental taxes and the triangle is kind of what are used to fund those tax increment financing projects. And at the end of the term of a TIF district and project is when you have the new tax base that's been increased by that investment. So for the action that's been set to discuss today, I want to talk about how TIF happens in two parts. So the first step is a district plan. That's the overall plan of redevelopment for an area. So it's kind of more of a general description of what is planned to happen there. So it may contain actually multiple project areas, but it also sets the overall rules if you want to put any limitations on the projects within that district. The second step is we actually have a project plan for specific areas within the district. Now those areas may contain multiple development projects, but you only have one plan for each project area. But those project plans are restricted by anything you put in a district plan, and then they have anything more specific to the actual development of that project area. So today, I'm going to show you this map here. We're talking about the Center City South Redevelopment District in downtown. And the area in that red hash is what was called the original Center City South adopted in 2007. In 2008, that area was expanded to all of that rest of area to support projects that would support the New Interest Bank arena as well as any other redevelopment happening kind of south of Douglas in downtown. With the expansion that that project area, there were certain limitations that were enacted within the expanded area only. So that red hashed area has no additional restrictions. It follows the state statute. But the 2008 expansion does actually have restrictions that were in place. First would be a cap of 70% of the revenue. So any of the increment from that expanded area, 70% goes to pay for TIF eligible costs, 30% goes back to the tax and jurisdictions. There are also limitations to the eligible improvements, whereas really specific to street improvements within the area as well as a cap on how much could be used for parking improvements. But what we're seeing is there is a challenge for those projects happening south of the Douglas corridor that really made it challenging for development to occur in that. And so what they proposed changes to the district plan, so again, this is only talk at the district level, would be to remove that cap. But what it does do is it places a $370,000 increment that will still be distributed. So basically that caps the rate today that's distributed to the taxing jurisdictions will continue on for the remainder of the district. But 100% of any increment beyond that will be distributed to those projects and project areas. But then it also takes those restrictions on the eligible expenses, moves them back to what's authorized under the state statute. And again, I also want to reiterate that although it's doing that in the district plan, any project that comes forward still has to go through the City Council's approval. So although it moves the restrictions back to what's allowed under the state, any project that comes forward within that expanded area still comes before the City Council for consideration. At that time, you can also give directive on how you would like to see those projects to occur. But at this time, I would just like to reiterate that this is a request to have a hearing on November 5th for consideration of this, but I do stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasgow.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I do have a few questions. If we could go back to the slide regarding the location of the map. Okay, so when we're looking at this map, how does this compare in size to TIF districts in the city?
In size, this is one of the larger ones because it was a planned free development of downtown. It's most comparable to the other ones near here, like with the river. So you have the East Bank and the West Bank in size. So with that, those are probably the three largest districts we do have in the city.
Out of this area, which projects have capitalized on this? So out of, you know, this map, what has actually been done in terms of redevelopment?
Correct. So we have had projects in Project Area 2, that was the Exchange Place. Project Area 3B where we did the Chester Elias Park. Project Area 5, which was the Block 1 where the Ambassador Hotel as well as the city's project was the Block 1 Garage there in the southeast corner. And then Project Area 11 was where we did the redevelopment of Napster Park.
So a lot of...
But again, they're all kind of centralized right there on that Douglas corridor.
One of the questions I have in terms of what are the risks of taxpayers if they don't get the full projection to capture property?
So if we stay with what is today, the challenge is we probably will have some projects that are in consideration that would not occur. So it's really just considering to hamper any redevelopment that occurs south of that Douglas corridor is the biggest hamper. So we're losing any new kind of tax generation for the future.
Mark, if I could reframe the question. What protections do we place in our TIF agreements so that the city isn't on the hook for debt that...
Oh, thank you, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so with that, we have, we basically put in protections to protect the, whatever the increment is in that project. So the two ways that we generally do that are if it is a TIF project with the developer, we either have a pay-as-you-go. So basically the developer will fund those improvements upfront and then be reimbursed only by what increment is generated within that project. The other one would be the personal guarantees by the developer. So if there is a request for city bonding, the developer would personally guarantee those, any shortfalls on that bond debt. But generally speaking, that pay-as-you-go is the way that that goes.
Mayor, if I could, just to supplement that, the only element of risk beyond that would be for a city project, a city constructed project such as a parking garage. And there, obviously, there's no other developer, so that we don't have a guarantee or a pay-as-you-go approach.
That makes sense. In terms of most of these TIF districts?
Correct.
And so this was approved in 2007.
Correct.
Mended in 2008, which means that the full project began 2007, 2008.
That's a great question. So with, with the way TIF works is you have, going back to that step one and step two, if you have the district and then the project area. So the district is active for two more years. So basically that just means we, well, 2027, so roughly about two years. Within that time is when we are limited on when you can adopt any new projects. So any project can have its own 20-year life, but what this is basically saying is you don't, the district life began in '07, so it expired in '27. So that is the limit we have for any new projects to actually occur in that district.
Okay, so this doesn't extend it another 20 years?
Correct.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. You covered a couple of my questions there. And this isn't, this is, we're still basing the tax base off of 2007 numbers, right?
Correct, the district is what sets the base valuation.
Okay, yeah, just making sure. Is there, so the $370,000 that we're capturing and the county's going to disperse it, was that part of an agreement with county? Do they have to validate this TIF as well?
The, following the public hearing on November 5th, there is a 30-day period in which the county is allowed to take an action on that. So we have been in communication with them and that's where they felt that's great for all the taxing jurisdictions to retain what's been distributed to date going forward.
Okay, and I think that's all I have on this one.
See no further questions for staff? Thank you very much, Mark. We will now open it up for public comment. Any individuals who would like to speak on this matter? We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in District 1 and in District 6.
I'll make a motion. Move that the council adopt the resolution setting a public hearing on November 5th, 2024, for consideration of an amendment to the Center City South Redevelopment District and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Cheney Dam repairs phases 1 and 2.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. We spent a lot of time recently talking about Cheney Dam in particular to what's happening with our drought response and responding to the challenges. So the item for you this morning is to take the opportunity while the water level is down to make needed repairs to the dam. So the item I have for you this morning has several parts of the request. One is for funding to move forward with the project. The other is to, for an alternative project delivery so that we can expedite the repairs, find the best way to get this done the most effectively. So I'll talk through those details here in just a moment. So in 1961, the city contracted with the Department of Interior for construction, operation, and maintenance of the dam and reservoir. Cheney Reservoir was built at the time solely for the purpose for providing water supply to Wichita and the Wichita region. We currently get about 60% of the city's daily water demands from Cheney Reservoir. The main, what we would call the main portion of the dam, so the dam itself is nearly three miles long. About half of that is armored, if you will, with a soil cement face. So it would be considered the main part of the dam. The earth and core of the dam is protected by cement-treated soil. Erosion over time from freeze thaw, ice loading, wind and waves, as you can imagine. And I've got a few more pictures to show you what this looks like in some different areas. An inspection by the Department of Interior recommends a 10-year interval for inspections and repairs were last done in 2000. Needless to say, one of our biggest challenges with trying to make repairs of this dam is you've got to lower the reservoir and that's not something we ever want to do. So again, that's why we're taking that opportunity now based on where the current water levels are. A report from the Department of Interior also identified October as the best period if we needed to lower the reservoir to perform repairs. So it's a good time of the year to be doing this. And with our proposed project delivery method, we're going to do everything we can to make that as short a schedule as possible so we can get this done expeditiously. Staff and our consultant in 2017 and 2018 developed this heat map. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but what this did was look at current elevations compared to former, when the dam was originally built, if you will. So the hotter colors, red and yellow, is where the more repairs are needed. But this helped really inform our plans moving forward and what we would go forward with. Design is complete, is now being approved by the Bureau of Reclamation. We've got all the permitting in place that we need to move forward to construction. This is just a picture showing some more current conditions. Again, there's about a mile and a half of this soil cement portion of this dam. You can see what's happened with some of the erosion and the need to get in and make repairs now will certainly put us in a better spot. What happens in the future if we don't take advantage of making repairs now is it's quite possible that the Bureau of Reclamation or the Corps of Engineers could tell us that we need to make repairs at some point in time. We don't want to be in a situation where the reservoirs come back to normal pool and have to lower it again. This, what this picture shows in the orange is basically how we would rebuild the steps. The soil cement dam face has been, again, I mentioned, has seen significant erosion decay. Concrete repairs will be done in a stair-step pattern, starting at the lowest elevation to be constructed first. The manager mentioned this on Friday during our agenda review, and I think it's a really good point to make, is that obviously we go in and start at the lowest level, we start buying ourselves some time. If we can expedite that construction first, get even further up from the current water level, just in case we do get some precipitation at some point in time, hopefully we will, we want to be able to keep working and making improvements going further up the face. This provides a strong base for each step to build on, extending the life of the concrete and further protecting the inner core of the dam. And as I mentioned, the Bureau has provided a recommendation on the repair method and has approved the plans. So I've mentioned this already, but I'll just hit on this again real, real quick. If there's any silver lining to this drought at all, it's the ability to go in and make these repairs now. The current water level is almost a foot and a half below where the proposed repairs begin, and certainly considerably lower than the conservation pool, which we're still about eight feet down right now. As you know, in early August, the city entered into drought stage two due to the lower waters of the reservoir. We can now make these repairs without any additional lowering of the water level. And during construction, we're going to use some innovative technology with a wave break system to protect the work area from wave action and minimize additional lowering. So just on the chance, when you get wind action during construction, if the water level starts to come up, we will do things to minimize the impact of construction to make sure that we can keep moving forward. Specific to project delivery, especially compared to, if we were to look at it, the typical or more of a standard design bid, build approach for construction. The design is now complete. Again, it's something we started working on some years ago to make sure we were prepared if this opportunity ever arose like this without having to lower the reservoir. Staff recommends a construction manager at risk, project delivery method. This approach provides the opportunity for an expedited construction timeline, increased project coordination, and risk mitigation upfront. The contract will include a separation clause or contract cancellation terms in the event precipitation causes a rise in the reservoir level. What we need to do, got a mile and a half long dam, time is of the essence, we're going to need to get multiple contractors in here at the same time, working on the most critical areas first, again, starting at the bottom. There's a lot of coordination that has to happen. For us to be able to do that with traditional delivery methods would require us bidding multiple projects. And while we've done this before and are pretty good at coordinating things, it would be really difficult for us to be able to negotiate some of the risk issues that we're dealing with and timing factors. So by doing this with a construction manager at risk, we've got one person we work with, one firm we work with, who ends up hiring the contractors. They also do that by low bid so that we can be the most cost-effective here, but they can manage all of those logistics, multiple contracts working together at the same time. It's really going to mitigate our risk upfront. And I'll mention again, we'll work with them so that we have some type of separation clause, contract cancellation. If for some, if for some reason if we get into construction and we happen to start getting some larger rain events and the reservoir starts to come back up, we most likely would contemplate not moving forward. I think the last thing any of us want to do is get under construction, have the reservoir come up, and then lower it again. So it's something that we'll work into this contract, give ourselves the best options to be able to work our way out of that. The firm will be chosen through a request for qualifications with proposed selection criteria as you can see here. Not unlike what we've done on design-build projects, fairly similar approach, project understanding approach and experience of the proposer. The two highest weights are on proposed schedule and cost because we do want to make sure that we can get as much done as we can within the existing budget. And then as always, we want to incentivize and promote the use of emerging and disadvantaged businesses. So I talked about two phases, and the reason why this is split out in the capital improvement program is we thought at one time we might be able to take on part of this. It's kind of a quick-hit project, get the worst parts taken care of. That's why this was a split out. Because of where we're at with current reservoir levels and the ability to take all of this on, we're just combining those two budgets in the CIP and requesting all of that funding at this time for a total of $13 million. we're just combining those two budgets in the CIP and requesting all of that funding at this time for a total of thirteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With that, staff recommends city council approve the budget, approve the use of the CMAR project delivery, approve the RFQ criteria for that same process, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Pending your approval today, we do have the proposal almost ready to go out the door. We would hope to have a CMAR in place within sixty days and starting construction soon after. There should not be a lot of lead time on material delivery or other procurements. So our hope is that construction could begin soon after that and we can take advantage as much as we can of the water level still being down. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. I have one question. Items four and five actually showed the project will be funded by specific funding streams, but in this item that was missing in the green sheet, can you explain how the project will be funded? Not just from the CIP, but the funding sources?
Thank you for asking that, Mayor. And what this item should have indicated the same as items four and five. We just didn't get that on there for whatever reason. But it'll be funded by either future revenue bonds or cash reserves, just as the, any of our other utility projects would be on the capital side.
Thank you, Gary. We will open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I see none, so I will be the one that motions to approve the staff recommended action, that the city, that we approve the budget, approve the use of a CMAR project delivery, approve the RFQ criteria, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding for twenty twenty-four railroad crossing improvements.
Good morning again. Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities for the record this morning. Presentation for funding for twenty twenty-four railroad crossing improvements. There are approximately one hundred and eighty-five railroad crossings within the city. Capital Improvement Program includes funding each year to help improve the crossings. This is a photo of Harriet Orient at a location that had been completed in previous years. These improvements require coordination with following railroads: Burlington Northern Santa Fe, BNSF, Union Pacific Railroad, UP, Kansas and Oklahoma Railroad, and Wichita Terminal Association. Most of the improvements are made by the railroads and a portion of the costs are paid by the city. The city's funding is typically utilized to upgrade railroad crossing materials, improve approach pavement and bring sidewalk crossings to current standards. Some maintenance work, such as minor improvements to crossing approaches and drainage improvements may also be completed. One of the locations that is on the list to be completed in twenty twenty-four is May at Southwest Boulevard. Crossing improvements each year are determined by railroad forming scheduled maintenance and the opportunity to do the repairs, railroad approaches at the same time. We also take citizen complaint of rough crossing that prompt us to discuss a railroad to have it improved, both the crossing surface and the railroad approaches as needed. And each location is evaluated by engineering staff in the respective railroad to determine the most effective treatment to improve the crossing. The Capital Improvement Program includes two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four funded by general obligation bonds for railroad crossing improvements. Staff recommends initiating the full twenty twenty-four funding at this time.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation and your work on this. Now, we have at least one corridor in my district where they have the wayside signals. Is that something that we can work into a program like this? Because I know sometimes the rail companies will also throw in and donate or pay for a good chunk of the wayside signals as well. And we want to make sure we have safety first, but after we get through some of the safety concerns and upkeep on the crossings, I was just curious what the opportunity would to expand it to wayside signals as well?
We do continue to look at that. There are some criteria to, that we have to meet to do that. Yes, we, we continue to look at that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Ballard. Thank you, Mayor. With these railroad improvements, does that come with wait times too?
Not, not for these.
Not really, but just kidding.
Any further questions for staff? I do have one question. Are the overpasses for the railroads, for instance, on Douglas, are they the responsibility of the city or the railroads themselves?
The railroads. They have those bridges.
So even the bottom, so for instance, there was a lot of walking this weekend at Chili Cook-Off? And I saw a lot of deterioration on the walls?
Yes, and we had made some, we had worked with the railroad to make some of those improvements. We had also had a project that we had painted that iron under the railroad, so we do coordinate with that underneath. We also put up some bird protection along that corridor to help prevent pigeons from nesting up above, hopefully keep the sidewalks cleaner below.
We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the budget and adopt the resolution as well as authorize the necessary signatures. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Cheney Copper Ion Equipment Replacement.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council, for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. On the item at the moment would approve funding for rehabilitation replacement of critical equipment necessary for protecting the public water supply and treatment systems from invasive zebra mussels. The Cheney Pump Station supplies raw water required for treatment to town for our customers. It includes a number of pumps and those on treatment system as well as backup power and other appurtenances necessary for the conveyance of water. Zebra mussels are an invasive species that are prevalent in reservoirs across Kansas, including in Cheney Lake. They've been in the lake for more than twenty years now. And copper ion treatment has proven to be very effective. It's kind of an industry standard for this application. And if left untreated, zebra mussels can cause extensive damage to pipes, pumps, important equipment for the conveyance of water. They attach to the interior walls of pipes and equipment, actually form colonies, reproduce and go to the extent that they can choke off flow, as was kind of illustrated in that one photograph in the middle there. That pipe, that's not part of, of our system. The copper ion system works very well to prevent these types of things. ONG Consulting LLC is the sole manufacturer and provider for the fortress muscle control system. So they were selected through a sole source procurement process. This equipment will, the equipment upgrades will make the system more effective. It will double the life of the copper bars or diodes that are part of the treatment system and will extend the life and provide the necessary protection that we need. ONG Consulting has provided a quote of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars for the project. The current adopted CIP includes, that should be, that should read three hundred thousand dollars. Apologize for the error there. There's a zero missing. An ongoing request for the Cheney Copper Ion Replacement. The current CIP includes an additional one hundred thousand and ongoing projects for water production improvements. It will be needed to bring the total proposed budget to four hundred thousand dollars. The project has been accounted for in the current rate model. It'll be funded with utility rate revenue or revenue bonds. And it is recommended at this time that city council approve the budget, approve the sole source procurement of ONG LLC, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? I see none. Thank you, Don. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will motion to approve the budget, approve sole source procurement, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Equus Wellfields Spur Line Replacements.
Thank you for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The current item would provide funding for an ongoing program to replace important pipelines in the Equus Beds Wellfield. In particular, these are spur lines, is what we call them. They connect water wells, individual wells or groups of wells to the main transmission lines that convey raw water to town to the, to the treatment plants. The wellfield consists of sixty-one production wells and fourteen additional recharge wells. Of the fifteen spur lines it issued, they're fourteen inch cast iron. They were original spur lines that were constructed in the nineteen forties. And so it's prudent to move forward with replacement of those lines ahead of failure. This approach is more cost effective than fixing on failure. Repairs are expensive. They're disruptive. They can cause crop damages. And besides that, we want to provide ongoing reliability of delivery of groundwater to the maximum extent possible. It's especially important during times of drought when we're trying to protect Cheney Reservoir. The current adopted capital improvement program includes six hundred thousand dollars for the wellfield spur line replacement program, bringing the ongoing project budget total to three point two million dollars. This will be used for remaining construction of the spur lines. It's recommended at this time that city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Don. I see no questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I motion to approve the budget, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Reconnecting Communities Discretionary Pilot Grant Agreement and Funding.
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. I believe this is my last item for today. Reconnecting Communities Discretionary Pilot Grant Agreement and Funding. As part of the Reconnecting Communities Discretionary Pilot Grant Program, one billion dollars has been programmed over the next five years for planning and construction. On October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the city council approved submission for a grant application to be submitted for the Twenty First Street Corridor. As part of the bipartisan infrastructure, a notice of funding opportunity for communities to submit a grant application to reconnect communities. On March first, twenty twenty-three, the city of Wichita was notified the grant was awarded. And it's been a long time coming. Been back and forth with the US DOT, but on September fourth, twenty twenty-four, the United States of Army Transportation approved the final version of the grant agreement and authorized staff to proceed. Attached is a picture of the study area. The Twenty First Street Corridor between Broadway and I-135 lies between two distinct culturally rich neighborhoods. To the west, lies, to the west of the corridor lies Wichita's North End, the Hispanic community with Mexican and other Latin American immigrants and families. To the east of the corridor lies northeast Wichita, including northeast Millor neighborhood and the Power neighborhood. One mile corridor between the two neighborhoods includes multiple sets of railroad tracks that are frequently blocked by trains causing motorists to wait extended periods of time or avoid the corridor altogether. The estimated daily train movements throughout the corridor is approximately seventy-five. The grant will allow for the city to hire a consultant to complete a planning study for the corridor to find solutions to lessen the impacts of train traffic, hopefully decrease times, Vice Mayor. The study will include an in-depth analysis of the railroad traffic, including frequency of trains, duration of trains and how trains interact with adjacent rail spurs to serve local businesses and its yards. As part of this study, I would like the consultant to look at the railroad operations to see if there's anything that they can do to help decrease the amount of time motors wait at the crossings. Possible solutions would be recommended to lessen the impacts the trains have to the motors traveling along Twenty First Street. The amount of funding awarded by US DOT is one million dollars. The Capital Improvement Program includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified for the local match for this project. It is recommended to initiate fifty thousand dollars at this time to begin the solicitation process to hire a consultant. And then I will be back in front of city council once a consultant is selected for contract approval, if approved today. It is recommended that city council approve the budget, acceptance of the grant, approve the agreement, adopt the resolution and authorize the signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Paul, for all your work on this. I know Maggie's really excited to get this one going. There's a number of places. I think Twenty First and Broadway is probably the, the most problematic spot in the city. There are some other spots as well. So could you give me just a little bit of a background on this grant? How this particular area got chosen for this grant and then also potential other opportunities for other grants to look at some of the other problem spots?
So this, this location was selected due to the, you know, it has been studied before. I think there was a, one of the recommendations was a vehicular overpass. That wasn't moved forward due to cutting access off to the local businesses. What we have found as we were going through the grant application and meeting with property owners, adjacent businesses in the area, what we had found were folks, it's not necessarily the BNSF line adjacent to Broadway. That train's usually moving as it goes through there. It's further to the east with the UP, where they are switching trains, building trains, et cetera. And some folks get stopped up to thirty-five to forty minutes while that's happening. Occasionally, vehicles will get stopped between two trains as well. So we're hoping that this location, that we can find something, working with the railroad, it's being redeveloped, get more folks up there that we can minimize or at least decrease the amount of time people are stopped to trains. Again, with some of the businesses we talked with up there, as a business owner, they, you know, they like the trains because it helps their businesses get products in and out, but as employers, they don't like to wait for them either. And some of the businesses that are going there are trying to hire the workforce that are in the adjacent communities for that. So we're trying to, transit doesn't go up there now, so if we can be more predictable when the trains are, then we can hopefully get more people to and from that area.
And when you talk about past plans, is that the same plan that they had when they did the Douglas Street Overpass as well?
I think it was after that, we had, you know, there was some thought of rerouting some of the trains, moving BNSF tracks over towards the east to, you know, get closer to UP, but it's difficult there with, you know, close proximity to their yards. So it's not, moving the tracks isn't an easy prospect.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul. I know you've been working really hard on this for almost two years, so. But I am curious, what does the timeline look like moving forward?
I have the, the request for qualifications almost written. So with approval today, we'll get that out here in the next couple of weeks. I would like to have a consultant onboard by January first.
And then how long will this study take?
Sixteen to eighteen months is what we have for, just to get all the public improvement.
I can tell you what the problem is right now. Just cut to the chase.
Yeah, yeah. So to get public input and working with the railroads. Yeah, yeah, so to get public input and working with the railroads to see if there's anything with their operations that we can work through.
I will have a follow-up question to that. Since this has been studied before, and I think a lot of folks know what the problems are, how will this be different?
I think we'll probably, in my mind, I think we need to work with, again, when we, we had heard from some of the area residents as we were putting this grant application together, some of the comments we had heard were even from the railroads that they were stopped waiting in, to get into the yard. I don't know if that's the yard of their, you know, where they build trains, or if what they were talking about was the Central Rail Corridor that we have kind of talked about a little bit with Douglas Central, Thirteenth Street to get those over. So, you know, there's a limited number of tracks over that corridor, so they might be staging north of there in order to enter onto those tracks. So I think that's some of the information that we need to have the consultant gather and understand railroad operations to see if we can make any improvements to what they're doing.
I'll have one more question to that. Obviously, a lot of folks do travel on Thirteenth Street because there is that overpass, and that is one of the major complaints that we get regarding Twenty-First and Broadway. How much was, how much more was it back when they were building the overpasses to build the Twenty-First Street one, when they decided it was too costly? And how much will it be now?
I don't know the true answer to that. I would have to research that, and I don't know if it was too costly or again to, if it's elevated to get them back down into their yards with the grade separation. I think that was part of it as well. Because there, a lot of their yard is up right up there at north of Twenty-Ninth Street, where they have multiple tracks going over Twenty-Ninth. Great possibility.
I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Johnson and Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I'd like to take action that the City Council approve the budget, accept the grant, approve the agreement, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Twenty twenty-five Federal Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Grant.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Captain Aaron Moses, the executive officer of the Wichita Police Department, here to discuss the twenty twenty-five Federal Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Grant Application. I think we're all aware of what the integrated care teams or ICT team model is, but just for some background, it's a team combined of professionals from law enforcement, social care, and medical care. We currently have two separate models operating within our city, which is ICT one, a true co-responder level unit, which includes a police officer, comm care staff, and a paramedic. Last year, working with the City Manager's Office and Sedgwick County leadership, we expanded that model to go through ICT two through five. The ICT two through five teams were structured differently. So the two through five teams include a comm care master's level employee and then a bachelor's level care specialist. They do not include a law enforcement officer or a paramedic. I know the Vice Mayor and I attended a community meeting where questions were asked about that, and we wanted to evaluate the two through five model versus the ICT one model to see the impact to our calls for service and whether the additional law enforcement staff would be needed in the future. We are very happy with the way the ICT two through five teams are functioning now, but we do see some opportunity for enhancement by adding in embedded law enforcement officers to more teams. To that end, we identified the twenty twenty-five Federal Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Grant, skip for short. This grant does not have a match, and we do believe these funds will be available to staff true integrated care teams to allow for more than just ICT one. This is a one-year grant, and our intention is to apply for four hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars in grant funds for four, four full-time law enforcement officer positions, as well as forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for equipment for the ICT teams. That equipment includes radios for our civilian staff and ballistic protection for the civilian staff. When we identified this grant, Chief Sullivan made it a priority to meet with Malachi Winters, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, but he is the manager of the ICT teams from the county side. So we had an in-depth conversation with him about how he thinks these funds would best suit the partnership, and we landed on the full-time law enforcement personnel as well as the ballistic protection for civilian staff. The total amount that we apply, we intend to apply for is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. We do believe there are benefits to the ICT one model and replicating that model. Adding an embedded law enforcement officer allows for a quicker response by ICT teams and enhanced communication. The current process for ICT two through five involves two, at minimum, two police officers being dispatched to a call for service upfront. They will get there, identify this as an opportunity for an ICT team to respond, work with nine-one-one to send a page to those ICT teams, and then communicate directly with the non-law enforcement personnel about what they have at the call that they're at and why it's an ICT call, and then coordinate that response. Our ICT teams have learned radio etiquette very quickly and work well with our officers on the radio, but having an embedded law enforcement officer does cut out some of that middleman communication, and it will also allow for us to directly divert calls from the commissioned police officers responding initially because there will be a commissioned officer embedded on more of these teams. This will allow patrol officers to remain available for other calls for service, and there is a desire from the clinicians that we've spoken with on our teams to have embedded law enforcement on the teams. Just for some context on the ICT one success rate for treating in place, these are statistics from March, May, June, July, and August. We're missing April. But in those months, the ICT one averaged fifty-six point seven five percent treat in place, which means they responded, and the person experiencing a mental health crisis did not have to go somewhere else, be it a hospital, comm care, or in the worst-case scenario, jail for committing a crime. Our goal is to see about fifty percent, so we're exceeding that goal with the ICT one model. And in those months, they responded to three hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. The recommended actions to authorize the application for the twenty twenty-five Federal Burn State Crisis Intervention Program, skip grant, and I am happy to stand for questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Captain. Appreciate the work and the expansion on this, this program. Definitely needed. So was there concern coming from ICT two through five? They feel more comfortable with an officer out going with them?
I wouldn't call it concern because with the current model, there are officers that remain on scene with the two non-commissioned staff from the ICT two through five teams. There was a desire to have an embedded law enforcement officer to quicken that response and then reduce the number of officers that have to remain on scene. We had a discussion with Mr. Winters about expanding ICT through two-five staff, the civilian staff. They are having challenges filling some of those positions already due to the hours and the lack of the embedded law enforcement officer. So we, as a group, decided that this would be the best way to utilize these funds.
Okay, so no paramedics added to the?
Not at this time. It would be a law enforcement officer. Obviously, the addition of paramedics would have to be a decision made by Sedgwick County.
Okay, I know there are some concerns from people in the community. Sorry, that having a uniformed officer out there can exacerbate, you know, maybe somebody triggers somebody. Have we seen anything like that with ICT one or any of the other circumstances?
No, and I would challenge that assertion to say, in these situations, when ICT two through five is responding, there's actually more officers generally there than when we utilize ICT one. Like I said, many of these calls are an automatic two-officer response. Those two officers respond to the call. They render the situation safe, and then they will call for an ICT team, which would be the civilian staff, but they remain on scene with that ICT staff. So there's already going to be at least two officers there. With the ICT one, one model, there is one officer in the vehicle that responds with the clinician. So there's a reduction, actually, in the number of officers on scene to maintain the safety of the situation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Last question. I know there's some concern about funding employees with grants, so what happens if, and I see that we're going to try and apply for this grant for at least two more years, twenty-six and twenty-seven, and probably whenever it's available beyond that, so what happens if the grants run dry? What would be our contingency there?
It's a great question, and it's something that we evaluated, and essentially, the need for these teams is so important that we would absorb those into our current staffing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Captain, and I just was gonna ask the exact same thing. Anytime I see staff funded in a grant, it makes me worry, right? But it sounds like you have a solid plan that if funding weren't allocated from other grants, for additional funding, that it would be absorbed in the budget, right? So we wouldn't lose the positions.
Correct. So our current authorized staffing is seven hundred and seven commissioned officers.
Yep.
This would elevate that to seven hundred and eleven. If the grant were not to be renewed or we were not able to get it in the future, we would go back to seven oh seven, but those four officers would remain in the ICT teams.
Okay, thank you. And just as a side note, too, Councilmember Johnson and I had the pleasure of voting on ICT one and then two through five, so just glad to see that this pilot project has really worked. So thank you for all you do.
I see no further questions. Thank you, Captain. We will open it up for public comment. You may come to the microphone. Please state your name and your address.
Mayor, Councilmen, and Councilwomen, my name is Matt Foley. I live in a very challenged neighborhood, and I also indulge in listening to broadcasts and our dispatch, and mental health crisis in this city is a very crucial issue. I think we have now passed a hundred and seventy thousand police assigned cases so far this year. The city is in a state of meltdown. Mental health, being able to address mental health problems in this city is a matter of extreme importance. Today also happens to be the anniversary of Cedric Lofton's death while having a mental health crisis in custody in a Sedgwick County juvenile detention facility. So from a personal perspective, and a longtime activist in this city, this sounds like it could be quite beneficial to the future of this city and to the children of this city because they need a brighter, happier future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. We'll continue with public comment.
Twilight Purity District One. I am for this. I bet I do have some questions. So it's nearly five hundred thousand dollars for four officers. Will these officers only be available for just one shift per day, or is it two people, two shifts? I don't know how that's envisioned, so that's something that's curiosity. And the other thing is, I mean, hopefully, you will encourage the police department to gather data on this. You know, I've commented before that there's not transparency on litigation, but perhaps, you know, you could see a change in litigation or suits filed by using these additional folks in these crisis teams. But encourage the people to get the data so that you know, so that you'll have it. It could be really great news for WPD, but without the data, you don't know. Thank you.
Any further questions, or, sorry, any further individuals who would like to speak for the council? Captain Moses.
I would just, in response to the, to the last speaker, we do track detailed statistics related to all of our ICT teams. That includes ICT two through five currently and ICT one, and that will continue as far as number of calls responded to. There's a whole, a whole litany of data points that Malachi keeps track of for the ICT teams, and we will absolutely continue that.
I will ask one follow-up question to that. Are you looking for any partners? I know that you mentioned equipment. Are you looking also for individuals or organizations to help out with equipment?
We always welcome the opportunity for, for private industry, obviously, to invest in our city and, and partners to help us fund and support these opportunities.
Thank you. I see no, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Hoheisel took all of my questions. The last one, though, I can't remember the last time we had a workshop on this. I think it was ICT one. So could we potentially have a workshop in the spring, like no rush on it, but getting that data together and looking at the impact? I think that would be beneficial for everybody because the workshop on ICT one was pretty awesome, just looking at how it's worked. And I think something with this sometime in the spring, like halfway through the grant, something that could benefit the community.
Yeah, I wouldn't see an issue with that, and we also, I think, intend to cover some of this information in our on-bond, on public safety with, with the county that's coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will close public comment and bring it back to the bench. I will motion to approve the application for the twenty twenty-five Federal Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Grant. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Bond and note sale.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to present to you the results of our most recent bond and note sale. Just a reminder, we issue notes and bonds to finance capital improvement projects. Notes are very short-term instruments, typically with maturity of about six months or to a year, a year in this case. We typically use those to finance projects that are in progress. And then when a project is completed, we're either gonna take those notes out and pay cash to take them out, or we're gonna issue bonds to replace those notes. So that's why we issue bonds. Our bonds typically mature anywhere from ten to twenty years, depending on the type of the bonds and the financing of those. So just a reminder, you actually approved this sale on August twentieth. The sale occurred on September nineteenth, about two weeks ago. We come to you at the next available council meeting and ask for your ratification of those sales results, so that's why I'm here today on October first. And then we actually closed the bond sale on, on October fifteenth, or in about two weeks. So how do we know whether we had a attractive sale? We look at a variety of metrics. We look at whether the sale was competitive, and by competitive, we define that as the number of bidders. We actually had a record number of bidders for this sale, so we feel really good about that. We also like to see a really tight spread between the highest and the lowest bidder. That tells us that the market views our debt as attractive, and there's not a lot of variance, and the spreads actually were very narrow this time as well. And then finally, we'll compare it to what other peers are selling for, what some of the indexes have interest rates at for recent sales, and again, we compared very attractively to those metrics as well. So our results we view as very, very good. We sold it one series of notes, series three eighteen. This was about eighty-one million dollars worth of notes. About forty-five million of those were for special assessment projects, and then about thirty-six million were for general obligation at large projects. Again, we received seven bids. I think the previous, we, we've received seven before, so this wasn't to record on the notes. We awarded to TD Securities, and our interest rate is two point eight four percent. We also sold a series of eight thirty-five bonds. These are GEO at-large. They're about twenty-six million dollars. These bonds will be used to finance West Bank improvements. We received nine bids. The most we've received previous to this in any sale, at least as far as I, my records go back, were seven, so it was very, very competitive, which is very good. We awarded the bid to Robert Baird and Company at an interest rate of three point three seven percent. I should mention, these actually have a maturity of fifteen years. Most of our GEO typically has a maturity of ten, but we stretched the maturity on these to fifteen. Finally, we sold a series of special assessment bonds. These are series eight thirty-four. We sold about thirty-three million dollars of these bonds. These are paid off by special assessments assessed to property and benefit districts. We received fifteen bids. The most I'd ever seen previously, I think, was ten, so these were, for whatever reason, these were very attractive in the marketplace. So these were, for whatever reason, these were very attractive in the marketplace, very tight spread. We awarded the bid to UBS Financial Services at a rate of three point four-seven percent. These are twenty-year, fifteen and twenty depends on the special. But some of the maturities are fifteen, and some are twenty in this series. So the recommended action today is that you ratify the award of the bids, which the city manager approved after the sale, that you adopt the bond ordinances on an emergency basis, that you adopt the bond and note resolutions, and that you authorize the necessary signatures. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions for staff? Thank you, Mark. I do have a question. Regarding the Series eight thirty-five, you just mentioned this is for West Bank improvements.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is it fifteen-year maturity and not ten?
Those are financed out of TIF and SID revenues generated in the West Bank. And typically, we like to match the maturity schedule with the viability of the TIF and the SIDS. We're trying to match our inflows with our outflows. And those two financing arrangements have a longer lifespan. So we stretch the debt to match the lifespan of those two areas.
I see no further questions. Thank you, Mark. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will motion to approve, oh, sorry. I will motion to ratify the award of the bids by the city manager for each series of bonds and notes, adopt the bond ordinance on a declaration of emergency basis, adopt the bond and note resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Airport Hotel LLC Supplemental Agreement Number Two, Wichita Dwight D Eisenhower National Airport.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers. Jesse Romo, Director of Airports for Wichita Airport Authority. Good to be here this morning with you to talk about a good project that just needs a little bit of time. In background, December twenty twenty-one Airport Hotel entered into a concession lease agreement with the Airport Authority to develop a hotel at Eisenhower. The address there is just north of the Hampton Inn, if you're familiar right off of Eisenhower Parkway. The agreement required a minimum of investment of fifteen million of private funds. They are going to construct a dual-brandet hotel that has both Hilton Garden Inn and Homewood Suites. The agreement contained an initial construction schedule that dictated a construction start date and allowed termination of the agreement if a final certificate of occupancy was not issued by June one of twenty twenty-four. During twenty twenty-two, there were several delays. Many of them were outside of the developer's direct control. That led to their request to extend the construction schedule and its related deadlines by six months. We evaluated, and we concurred with the extension. We saw progress was being made. And in early twenty twenty-three, under the authority afforded me in the agreement, we approved the extension of the certificate of occupancy issuance to twelve one of twenty twenty-four. This time extension did not impact the rent schedule, which went into effect on February first of twenty twenty-three. So since that point, they have been paying and continue to pay us land rent each month. Airport Hotel has provided quarterly construction status updates to us throughout this year. We have in turn shared that with our airport advisory board at each of their meetings. And in September, we finally came to a point where they said they needed additional time and requested a six-month extension to the project completion. So the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy would be moved another six months. Weather and supply chain issues were among the main drivers of project delay. I just wanted to share with you some pictures of progress. The first one, left to right, was taken March, late April, and then early June. And then, this past Friday, I was driving around and got pictures of what the site looks like currently. And so we can see a lot of progress has been made externally. You'll notice a lot of vehicles and contractors are present. What you won't see is all the activity that is inside the building going on currently. There are no changes to term or financial arrangements to this agreement. The initial term is thirty years with two ten-year options. The annual land rent of seventy-three thousand remains in effect until the end of twenty twenty-five. Starting January of twenty-six, they're either gonna pay us a commission of defined total annual gross revenue, or seventy-three thousand, whichever is greater. And those commissions are called to increase at different increments in different years. Three point five percent in twenty fifty, four point five percent in twenty fifty-eight, five point five percent in twenty sixty-three. All of those things remain intact. So there is no financial impact to the Airport Authority with this extension. With that said, it's recommended that we do approve the supplemental agreement, authorize necessary signatures. I am happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Questions for staff? I see none. I'll just ask one question. Obviously, anytime development happens on airport property, it still belongs to the Airport Authority. So can you explain that one with folks?
Sure thing. The FAA puts upon us to control property and land use. And typically, when you're working with an airport, you're either going to, the Airport Authority is either going to own properties on the front end or the back end of a deal. On the back end, we call it reversion clause, which comes back to us. Typically, what we see with all of our agreements, there's very minor exceptions, and that's for government-related properties. But we own everything on the front end. So this hotel that is being constructed is owned by the Wichita Airport Authority on the front end of this agreement.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff? Thank you, Jesse. We'll open it up for public comment.
Yeah, it's Twilight Purity District One. So in my career as a healthcare executive, I did several construction projects. And I negotiated a lot of construction contracts and dealt with contractors. So some of the questions about the delays, one of them is, I saw how the city was gonna get additional revenue when the hotel is open. But I didn't see in the presentation what revenue has been lost by giving in to these delays. When contracts are strongly worded, when there's penalties for delays, typically, contractors find a way to get the work done. The two delays, I guess, are just really a cause of concern for me. Is it just because the city's, you know, easygoing and say, yeah, that's fine? Or have other hotels or other construction projects, not just here, but have they all been delayed this number of months? I just think there's the potential that you're leaving money on the table when perhaps we're being a little too lenient with folks that you've contracted to do their job. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can.
Your manager?
Yeah, thank you. I'll start, and if Jesse wants to supplement my comments, he'd be welcome to. This agreement was crafted based on some experience we had with this developer on another project. And what was just mentioned was an issue on that previous project. Delays in completion of the project, which also then delayed us in terms of the revenue we would receive from the project. And that is why the Airport Authority's staff negotiated a base rent for the land from the beginning of the project. So we may be out some commission revenue, but we've established a floor, and that continues into the future to make sure that we're protected and we have a revenue stream throughout the construction process, even if that process is delayed. So I want to say that we learned from a previous problem and put in some safeguards.
If I could just elaborate a little bit on that, too, and clarify, there is absolutely no loss of revenue to the Airport Authority. The way the agreement was structured, we do get that land rent, as the city manager pointed out, which already went into effect, and they started to pay on that. There are already triggers and timelines established for commission. We are not at that point yet. So the only thing that this impacts is actually the tenant's ability to operate the hotel. And so that timeline has shifted a little bit on their end by a couple months, but it does not impact our revenue collections of it. And the city manager is absolutely correct. There were a lot of safeguards put in place. There were deposits put down that they had to hit certain milestones, like roof completion. And there's still actually some money in escrow to address any other outstanding issues, along with all the bonds that we have for construction that protect the Airport Authority. So again, no loss of revenue at all. All those timelines, the rent schedule, and all those fees remain in place, and they are current and paying those on a monthly basis.
I also will note that there is an incentive to the developer to complete this project because they are paying rent to us without any revenue coming in from the project. And that's why we implemented the process the way we did.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. There was also, I can't remember the amount, that was put in escrow to guarantee that this project would happen, too.
There was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars put into an escrow account to address any outstanding issues. There was also a two-million-dollar deposit that was made. That one was a little bit more abnormal, and that was triggered when roof completion was done. So we went through a certification process to make sure the work was done, inspected it, and released those funds. But the two hundred and fifty thousand remains in escrow.
We will close public comment and bring it back to the bench. This resides on Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Mayor, with a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Glasscock to attend the American Council of Young Political Leaders in the United States Department of State in Malaysia and the Philippines, December fifth through twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to speak to this briefly. The American Coalition of Young Political Leaders manages the US Department of State's funded exchange for American leaders to travel internationally. So I'll be part of a delegation of seven to nine leaders who are elected or appointed in government, public policy, or business. And all exchanges start in Washington, DC. We're gonna meet with elected officials, political party representatives, policy experts, and members of the business community in both Malaysia and the Philippines. I do plan to attend remotely the city council meetings. I think it's two AM in the Far East, so that will be a fun experience for me. And this is fully funded by the United States State Department. There's no cost to taxpayers.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the cutoff for young political leaders? Just curious.
So according to the definition, it's twenty-five to forty-one.
Forty-one? Man, I got four months here or so to squeeze in under that one.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember, what is your form of travel? Are you swimming or?
I need to work out a little bit more for that.
I motion to approve the travel. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu to attend the twenty twenty-four Mayor Summit against anti-Semitism in Beverly Hills, California, December eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I will add some context to that. This is an event hosted by the Combat Anti-Semitism Movement in partnership with the city of Beverly Hills. There will be no taxpayer dollars for this travel. Travel, meals, and accommodations are covered by the Combat Hate Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). This is an invitation to mayors, and have been approved by mayors in New York, Kansas City, Columbia, New Orleans, Las Vegas, Miami, Albany, Rochester, and other cities.
With a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Tuttle to attend the National Business Aviation Association in Las Vegas, Nevada, on October twenty-first through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I was invited by the Greater Wichita Partnership, as well as our Economic Development Team, to attend. I've attended in the past, and I'm excited to go and make sure that we represent the city of Wichita well. We are the area capital of the world, and make sure that we need to have a presence there. The registration for the booth, if you will, at the exhibition is covered by the Greater Wichita Partnership, but the rest of my travel will become from Economic Development Team. I would just like to make a caveat based on an earlier discussion that we've had today. It seems like I was going to join remotely for the workshop. But now that the workshop topic has been defined and something that I'm pretty interested in, I will be working with Troy to see if maybe my travel needs to be flexed. So Legal, I have two questions for you. If we do change the date and maybe I don't go out until Tuesday, would we bring this item back to us?
What you could do is just have the motion be subject to scheduling.
Okay.
Offer those alternative dates in the motion.
Okay. And then my other question is just really logistical, parliamentary procedure, if you will. The whole time I've been here, no one's ever abstained from their travel before, and to have today. I wasn't planning on abstaining. Can you just provide some clarification, so I know what to do? And if we're supposed to have been doing it wrong for five years and nine months?
There's no real guidance on this specific travel item. Our policy doesn't require that you abstain from voting on travel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Before I move on to travel, their round building is digital. Could you bring back some help for our round building? I move to approve the travel.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Are there any appointments? I see none. We will move to comments. Were there any comments? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I am a proud graduate of Leadership Wichita, class of two thousand and fifteen, best class ever. And now I serve on the Board of Trustees. And on Friday, Leadership Wichita held our Government Day, which is Local Government Day, which is an opportunity for the thirty-four participants in Leadership Wichita, who are, you know, leaders and really just exceptional professionals who represent our city well, to learn more about the functionality of the city of Wichita, as well as Cedric County. And from the city, we had Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager, Jamie Nix, Director of Library, Gary Jansen, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and Penny Feis, Director of Transportation. All give presentations, just really, and I'm sorry, Mark Manning, the Director of Finance, as well. Just did a fantastic job of representing the city of Wichita. I had so many positive comments from participants saying how much they learned about the city. The most important comment that I think that was made as a participant in the class said that she earnestly felt like the city of Wichita wants their feedback, and Cedric County as well. But it was discussing the city. So just couldn't have been more proud of our team. So thank you for representing us so well at Leadership Wichita last Friday. And then also just a comment. Just a comment about North Carolina. And if we can please keep them in our hearts. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is a question for Bob or for Legal. There seem to be a lot of conversations lately happening about council travel. And I wasn't here when the ordinance, I believe, was moved forward. So I'm just curious. Most people are not going to watch the meeting to see who's paying for councils. I don't know if that's something that we add. From what I understand, in the past, it's been put in the agenda for transparency. But I think it's a little misleading when we're approving it if someone doesn't say who's paying for it. I don't know. It just seems to get a little bit messy. And I don't know if you have any context or can clarify any of that. It looks like the taxpayers are paying. It looks like the taxpayers are paying for it sometimes unless you watch the meeting and/or ask somebody. So I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure that it's a little more clear maybe for the public.
Mayor, what the ordinance does requires approval of travel at a cost of the city over $500.
So when other organizations are paying for it, do those not need to be on there, or?
I believe it's been just past practice. And so make it correct if I'm wrong. I think it's just been done as a practice.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I think the clarification for that, though, would be based on the ethics ordinance that we passed previously. If we received a gift, then it would have to be from the bench. So I think that would probably be the additional context, is if somebody's paying for it, then we'd have to have it from the bench and be grew by council. Would that be a correct understanding?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, I think it's just to clarify that it's a gift or not a gift.
So then those would end up on their gift list or any of our gift lists if another organization is paying for the trip?
To the definition of gift, and gift is defined in the ordinance. So it's not that I can say every time it would be considered a gift. I mean, gift is actually defined, I can't say that each time would be considered a gift.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. And for, I know I had that question when we were talking about the ethics ordinance. The understanding that Kathy Sexton had said that if it's approved from the bench, then it doesn't have to be in the end-of-year report because it's already publicly declared from the bench was her answer to that question, too.
Thank you for that reminder. I just, thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Yeah, I was just going to highlight that, too. I have not ever claimed it. And most of the time when I am traveling, it's because I've been asked to represent the city and to present. And so then I don't really consider it as much of a gift when I'm going there to work. So, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. Last comment I have about the, I think Vice Mayor's Ballard, or Ballard's question comes up because of a conversation her and I had about, Meyerson traveled Oklahoma City, and that we didn't say from the bench that there weren't taxpayer funds being used for it. And so there were no taxpayer funds used for it, so I'll put that on the record. When we traveled Oklahoma City, the mayor and I, taxpayer funds were not used, but we didn't say that from the bench. So that was, I think, the vice mayor's comments, and we had a good conversation about it. That we'll do, I'll be much more intentional, especially when we have these conversations from the bench, clarifying that for the record as well.
Any further comments? I see none. I motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six one. Have a great day.